I'm being seven o'clock, call the Halifax Planner Board into the session. Members present Rick Mary, Amy Troop, and Gordon Andrews. The appointments we have in hearings tonight are 7:00 PM. Continued proposed zoning bylaw change 167-7D-15 marijuana establishments. 7:15 continued hearing for elevated routes 319 Monponset Street, site plan review.
Continued hearing?
Continued hearing for elevated routes for 319 Monponset Street for special permit. The other one was the site plan. 7:45 continued hearing for River Street Associates LLC, Robert Grant, 115 River Street, amended site plan. Discussion Magical Years Learning Center, Dossie Kennedy 933 Plymouth Street. Discussion Pasture Lane status. And discussion 5G at 40R and Scott Burgess Hilda Lane. We have some bills, three for Amory Engineering. And we have meeting minutes for March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amy?
Sorry.
Okay. So at this time we'll continue the hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw changes for 167-7D-15 marijuana establishments.
Any thoughts, Rick?
No, any thoughts, no?
No.
What are you thinking?
I'm torn. On one hand, I totally appreciate some of the things that came in front of us last week at the meeting, that they make valid sense, that we shouldn't limit the business. And on the other hand, I hear a lot of residents saying they don't want more than two, so I'm just gonna put that out there.
Hmm.
And obviously it goes to town meeting, so I'm kinda torn. I almost wish that I could just be like, uh...
I think two is plenty, in my opinion. You know? I think one's plenty. But I can't see the need to have more than two. I don't think how it's gonna benefit the town at all. You know, they're gonna start competing with each other, it's not gonna really benefit us at all, I don't think.
Yeah, I can see that.
You know what I mean? I mean, I think two would be plenty. That's my, you know, my opinion.
Yeah. No, I'm just sitting here discussing. The only thing is, is like, so then they, where the zoning that we have limits it anyways, so we're just adding on a little bit more law, and I'm not for tons of laws.
So adding on the law is just gonna limit the... You're still going by that 20, what, the percentage of the package stores, is that how you figure that?
Pouring licenses.
Pouring licenses.
Or like the licenses.
Yeah, what did that work out to?
I think it was 13 that we had.
13 pouring?
13 licenses in general, and somewhere around nine, 10 pouring license. Something like that. So which would end up to be two.
Yeah.
So I guess, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I think it makes sense that we don't have too many, but by the same token, I mean, I think the limit's gonna be here because I don't see too many people coming in. If we're already saturating the market, I don't see anybody else coming in either.
So you are torn two, is what I'm reading.
Yeah. So any comments from the public?
I'd just like to reiterate the points I made earlier in the week, well, last week, Rick wasn't here, that creating this potential obstacle for a growing industry, all you're doing is creating another hurdle that could potentially take up to two years to clear off the books, because it would require a two-thirds voted town meeting, or hosting a special town meeting to do that. I also don't foresee there being enough revenue to be divvied up between more than two currently.
Yeah.
But five years down the road, 10 years down the road, we don't know, and are we gonna hamstring ourselves for potential businesses coming to town? We as a town have a very difficult time attracting business because of our demographics and geography, et cetera, that just creating another obstacle could potentially hamstring us in the future. I think the market itself will naturally keep it to two. Or if one of the two is not run properly and well, one may be the only one that exists in town.
Right.
But I don't think we as a small town should be trying to create another seven government.
I mean, my thought also, my thought also is, I don't think this is a cheap venture to get into. It's not really like opening up the car and store, right?
It's not cheap anymore.
So I mean, somebody's gonna have to do their due diligence to see that it's viable to open another store.
I would say if it's left open, you know, people see all these numbers on the news, but the net margins are really slim when you bake in 2A E and all these other tax repercussions. So, you know, if there are more than two, it's gonna be less likely that the ones that do exist can actually have an impact beyond the 3% host fee. They're not gonna be able to dip in to cash reserves and help out beyond the fee that's imposed, or, you know, it's part of the HCA. So I just fear that if it's opened up and there's more than two, it's less likely that those collectively, as individual entities, can really contribute in a meaningful way.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
I have thoughts.
Well, I would remind you that we're just making a recommendation.
Yeah, right.
Town meeting has to vote it, so...
I can see, yeah, I can see the pros and cons, you know? I mean, I can't, I don't see the need to have them more than two. But then, like you're saying, you don't wanna, you know...
I mean, there's three of us here tonight. Do you wanna take the vote tonight, or do you wanna do it at the town meeting? Are you gonna make town meeting?
Yeah, okay, of course.
I will.
I'm gonna be there. I don't know, Brendan will with the baby and everything that he has going on right now.
So, I mean, I don't know if you wanna wait on the vote, or we just take the vote?
I think that we probably should take the vote. I don't think Brendan will be there, and I'm surprised Mark's not here.
What do you think?
If we're gonna take a vote, we need a motion.
We need to, alright, so we need to divide, because there's two.
There's two options.
So I'm going to motion that the wordy first one, that changes to the whole 20%, and doesn't, it doesn't go down to, it's not simple, I'm gonna say that we should not recommend that one.
Is a motion, is there a second?
No second.
Is a motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so that'll be a no.
And on the second one that rounds to two, Rick, do you wanna make a motion on that, since you have a full feeling on it?
Which one is this now?
This would be the one that would limit to two.
Limit to the two?
Yeah. Without all the wordiness of like the 20% of this, and that, and the other thing.
I'll make a motion if we limit to the two.
To approve that.
Yeah.
Is a motion to approve, is there a second? You can second it and not vote for it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm torn on it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it as a no.
Okay.
So it's, it's a two, two zero?
Yep.
Can we state that at town meeting?
It'll be recommended.
Two one, I mean.
Yeah, it'd be recommended.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the hearing for the zoning bylaws?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing for the zoning bylaws.
167-7D-15, is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for elevated routes?
Yeah, do you wanna go read it?
Do the site plan first?
Alright, yeah.
Or do the other one?
How's it listed?
The site plan is first.
Alright, let's do the site plan. Do we have to motion to open that?
Yeah, just motion.
Motion to open the hearing for the site plan for 319 Monponset Street, continuation.
Is motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Applicants have anything more to bring?
We are here, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, appreciate it, thanks for having us back. You may remember during our last special permit hearing, there were a couple of open items the board wanted us to address on the site plan itself, to include labeling parking spaces, updating the parking calculation, no, so on and so forth, some other things. So we did that, submitted it to the meeting, we submitted that updated plan, the one that reflected the board's comments to peer reviewer. Peer reviewer provided comments to the town, to which we responded, and then ultimately, just, you know, we agreed with the peer reviewer, and he agreed with our comments. So I think the board got our response and the peer reviewer's response to our comment.
Yes, it did.
The only item left open per se was on the first comment from the peer reviewer. He wanted clarification on the use of the drive-through, and we will not be using a drive-through. There's no access any longer to use the drive-through on the outside, so the drive-through will not be used. We need a special permit, we don't tend to use it for any purpose.
So nobody's driving through, what do you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
What, do you have it cordoned off some way, or?
Uh, the wall's closed, so there's no drive-through access. So the overhang will be there, and we're probably just gonna put employees there, but the drive aisle is on the outside of it, as is depicted on, on the site plan.
Okay.
So it won't be used for any business purpose. We're probably just gonna put employees there.
Can we have the plan here?
Yeah.
Sure.
And then, so we updated the site plan with the comments, set that to the peer reviewer's comments back, he just wanted clarification on the use of that, so I think that was the only open item. So the structure, you'll see, one of the peer reviewer's comments, Al, if you don't mind, it was to add the loading zone area. So that loading zone area is depicted on the site plan, now complies with the one in this. That would be where the cars would have driven through previously.
For the drive-through.
Under the old operation, yes, correct. Not, not part of our operation. And you may remember, we added our delivery door, and by delivery, you mean delivery to the best, it's not delivery to consumers or anything like that. We added the delivery door in that location as part of the original site plan. So we just put a box to depict where the loading and unloading would occur. The structure of the overhang remains because of how it's tied back into the building, but it will serve any purpose as it's related to the use. We're gonna just put employees there. And then we added, where we discussed with the board last time, those angled parking lots, excuse me, angled parking spaces will be employee-only, and we put that in our comment to the peer reviewer as well.
As far as the parking spaces go?
Yes, we worked all that out, we updated the parking calculation. You remember there was a question on the open space? Al, do you, you wanna take that one, because I don't remember the percentages? I think we needed 45, and we had 63 or something, of open space percentage?
So, yes. The, we're well in excess of the requirement. All of this is included in the lot area, but it's all green space now, it's only cleared up to this point. And with the green space on the, on the lot itself, it results in, 45% of the lot area is left as green space, and we're well in excess of that. Yeah. So we were able to do the calculation based on that, and the, as a result, we have in excess of what's required. We need 29 spaces, and we're providing 34. The spaces are now numbered sequentially, rather than just...
Can we mute them? Oh, Jim Perry.
What about the size of the parking spaces going? I've noticed on the peer reviewer, they're saying it's not up to, not the right size, not the 10 by 20s, that we had, you know, had to do with Flower and Soul, how does that work?
Uh, the peer reviewer commented there was a pre-existing non-conforming condition, which we agreed, and he responded that it was just informational, there was no action required, that was his final response back.
Yeah, I just brought it up, just so you knew that they were...
Right.
Are you the peer reviewer?
Yes.
Oh, good to meet you!
Since it was pre-existing, it's...
I'm talking about you, I didn't know you were in the room. My fault.
I mean, technically, they could reduce the number of spaces and make some of them the right size, but it's kind of a trade-off, what do you want?
More spaces or bigger spaces?
There are fears that pretty much the spaces that would be used would be the ones in this, off to the side, near the center.
Yeah, those are all roughly 9 by 18. And there's, there's additional room on those aisles, the drive aisles are wider than typical, so technically you could consider them to be 20 feet long.
Right.
Literally, the drive aisles are wider than, you know, you typically 24 foot, in and one way.
But typically, you wanna see 10 by 20, right?
That's, that's what your bylaw calls for.
Yeah.
If I could offer, 9 by 18 is not an uncommon size in other towns, I think Mr. Brendan would agree with that. 10 by 20 is standard, 9 by 18. Some towns allow as low as 8 by 18 or whatever for compact spaces, so... And some of the narrower ones are in along here, that's designated as employee parking, so it's gonna be low turnover, as opposed to if you were in a shopping plaza or something like that, or a convenience store, you have a high turnover, every three to five minutes someone's coming and going, then you want wider spaces, and they're loading packages in and all that. It's not the case here, so...
I just said note that I saw, and I just...
Yeah.
Yeah, did you have anything else?
No, I mean, from what the, from what I gathered, from what the applicant was stating with the drive-through, it sounds like they're gonna use those as two employee parking spaces.
Right.
So they actually have to addition another two spaces, so 36.
Do you wanna see the plan?
You'll have to see it.
Okay.
I have some, I'll have my seventy copy.
Yeah? Of the revised?
Same as, same as the revised plan, yes.
Now, this one's not revised.
Pat, when I adjusted the calculation on the 3,672 square feet divided by 175, correct?
Yes.
I came up with 20.9 spots.
Yes, so 21. Plus, plus they said they have eight spaces for employees, so...
Right, so 29, okay. That's what I was just looking for help, thank you.
Because your new plans show that loading area, correct?
Correct. That's the updated version, led by section here.
Okay.
You guys are just nicking, like, just short of hitting how many liquor lot? Like, how many feet was that?
Eight.
Eight feet? I had to call and ask. I was like, that looks like it hits, am I wrong, am I right? I, I almost wanted you guys to like zoom in, so I can see it.
Try the width of the line, right? It's not better.
And then you also did the traffic study?
We did.
And the accesses seem to be fine.
The plan is to use the access as the way it is today, except that the southernmost driveway on the right side of the building is gonna be mainly for employees, and none of the other driveways would be for...
In and out.
In and out. Those good sight lines.
Yeah. So those will be marked to enter and exit, two separates?
They actually are now.
Okay.
Yes.
And the sign is just there as well. I think, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just to make sure we have a full conversation, we had sent in, the board had asked about the sign when we were there last time. We sent that to the board, I think Joanne circulated it. There's no change in the location, but we wanted to put before the board the design for your review. My understanding is that you get it included in the site plan review, just so we don't have to do another meeting, so it probably makes it easier. So we provided that to the board for consideration. No change in the location, and if you remember, the existing sign kinda has that middle part, I meant, it looks like a T, if you will. The upper part will be the same, and then, but much smaller at the top, so that the existing sign is fairly wide, ours is, you'll see on the rendering there, it's got a person standing next to it just for scale. It's significantly smaller sign. I can bring up a color rendering if you don't have it, let me grab it quickly for you.
Thank you, Chair. This one here?
That's it, you got it, right. So you see the side is significantly smaller, I think there was, for now's sake, in the, there should be one with a person next to it, if that's that one.
Yeah, same.
Okay, got it, yeah, that's it.
It was only 29 feet high?
Twenty-nine feet.
156 divided by 12, so 13. And then the width is three.
Two feet, yep.
Three, and then it's roughly two feet up at the top.
And then this kind of jugs off a bit.
Do you want me to make a copy so that Rick can look at?
No.
What are we on here? Oh.
That's the only one we have in color. We have the other one off. It's easy to see the color. I'm gonna do that.
On the side, yeah.
On the other end.
Okay.
And then you're gonna have lights on the building, shining on the side.
Uh, down, down lighting, yeah, down lighting. So there's, you have, okay, and then if you look the next page, which is the northside elevation, you'll see the proposed wall-mounted sign location. Yes, sir. With the, with the downlight detail is on the previous page.
Right.
And then if you look at the, the next one that shows the existing sign...
On the building.
Yeah, on the building, that's the existing, so it's significantly smaller than what's there now. And was it...
Oh, yeah, and this one here too.
Downlight. And, and that's the side-by-side, so you can get it on the one the chairman has, that's the side-by-side to show that we're scaling that sign down quite a bit.
So this little circle thing sort of like goes off, almost like, okay. What would that look like? But it's gonna be smaller than what's already there?
Yeah, I see, maybe I can work.
Yeah, well, okay.
I don't know if you've answered this already, and it doesn't really have any, anybody medical and recreational, or just recreational?
Yes, yeah, just a doggy.
Any other questions on it? Site plan?
I think we've pretty much covered everything.
You good with the parking too?
Huh?
You good with the parking too?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, as you said, it's not up to our zoning, but it'll work.
Yeah.
It's been there long enough, and it's always worked before, so...
Yeah, and they have enough space for their square footage.
Any other comments from the audience?
I just have concerns that this group is not being held to the same standards as Flower and Soul was regarding size of parking spots, we're actually 30% over what's required in the bylaw. We added parking, for a recommendation of the board, so a precedent was set, you know, with, with those things, so I'm just concerned that a group coming in not being treated the same way is a little concerning regarding parking spots.
Well, that's why I made the initial comment, you know, on the size of the parking spots, you know, compared to Flower and Soul.
For sure.
But, and I guess, since it's pre-existing, and they've been running it there for, like three bags have been there, hasn't really changed much. Like I said, other towns, it works okay.
I think one, one of the things with, with the other site, not to get, because we really shouldn't be getting off, but, you know, you had mixed build, mixed use there too. Where this is just one use on the property.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Chairman, too, part of the consideration is, we have wider aisle widths that'll facilitate larger turning movements in the drive lanes. So I think that when we talk about the standard, you know, if they had a standard aisle width, and we had a larger aisle width, do you know what I mean? There are different projects, there are different buildings, there are different uses. And so we have additional room, if we were to shorten up those, you know, narrow those aisle widths, you know, to our benefit.
And, and the other thing is, the number of spaces that you have is over what you, what's required too.
Right.
Is, is the ATM still gonna be, if, has been measurement been done, if someone's actually at that ATM, if someone can actually pass on the outside of that, that person, has, has that been addressed?
We won't know about that.
Yeah, we addressed that at the last meeting. We're, we're over 24% over the requirement, parking. I think we're 24.3 or something, and I think...
What if you did remark all those to make them exactly the same, just to... What if you did remark all those to make them exactly the same, just to not have issue? How, how would that work out? Has any...
Well, I think it's a detriment to the town, quite frankly, just because, you know, the, the emphasis here was on maximizing the parking, not minimizing it. So we have, you know, as, as Pat had mentioned, we have increased aisle widths, so those make for safer turning.
Well, I just, I'm just saying it to work with us. So say there was 29 spots, which would be the 21 with the eight, right? Do you think that it could be reconfigu- configured quite easily so that it would actually meet all of the new guidelines? And be just more of a repainting of the town?
You could repaint them, certainly. I'm not sure, we, we didn't calculate out what that would do to the spaces. You could certainly repaint them, but I think, you know, from probably the planning board's perspective and the town's perspective, I think, are we doing it because somebody else with a totally different site, with a totally different project did it more?
No, I think, I think what we're looking at is, would the site handle the proper sizes? And I think it would.
Probably, yeah.
And so I just want to investigate that as far as if, if we did make those not diagonal on the employee side and took them and made them so that they were straight, and then maybe...
I don't think that would work on the...
Not on that. That wouldn't work at all.
Yeah, that wouldn't work.
Leave here what I'm trying to say, right?
Yeah, but I can see his point too, it's like we made Flower and Soul go 10 by 10.
Well, that's why I'm talking about it, because I don't want to...
I can see his point, that's, like I said, that's why I mentioned to begin with, so.
Agreed.
You know, what are you doing?
You mentioned it, so I didn't have to, so I agree. What would it look like?
Has a landscaping design been submitted and taken a look at as well?
I mean, are you changing the landscaping? I mean, it's already landscaped out there. I mean...
I, I think...
I mean, I think that, you know, that if, if we compare, if we're gonna compare projects, it's, it's really unfair to try to compare the two projects. You know, you're bringing up the other one, but it really didn't have landscaping out there before. I mean, this, this project is in the center of town, it was landscaped up. And it's, like I said, you know, I, I think, based on what that project is, it's, that has already been through the planning board for the site plan for pretty much all of those things before, and now it's just a change of views.
I have one more question. What's the distinction between the green space and wetlands? Is there a distinction?
No, it's, it's in the green state, and that's it.
So it's listed as pre-existing, non-conforming from the engineer, which it is. The parking I'm talking about for everybody, just in case I'm coming out of the blue.
Well, we're not really changing any parking, and the parking was approved through the site plan approval process. I believe if you're thinking about another project that needed to create more parking like this, if this needed to create more parking, then maybe you'd be looking at changing the whole design. That parking was already in there.
Forgive me if I can address the board, was, was it tra- was traffic studied on?
Yes.
And was it here with you? Yes, okay.
Any additional exterior lighting?
Uh, no, we, that was in our response to the, to your, your call.
I don't see anything in the sign bylaws that hurt any of the signs at all. Yes? Everybody agree?
The sign that's out front is just gonna be lit the same way the other one was from the ground up.
Yes. Yep, that's a hard rock, wondering if it's on the last page.
What do you think, Rick? The sign?
The sign?
Yeah, I think, I don't see anything either, but I just wanted to hear it.
It's everything is small, what was it before?
Yeah, that's what I think. I just was looking at the bylaws, I couldn't see anything that it interfered with.
Was a light plan submitted as part of the light plan? Like a parking lot lights and additional lights?
Like how the women's go across and where they are?
No, they're not changing any of the lighting that's there. Out of existing.
Okay, and there's, there's no need for additional based on security measures and such?
Correct, we can stay there.
It was a bank before, so.
It's still small value with money. Especially after today.
My today's worth more?
The locker wasn't completely crushed.
Oh?
The toilet.
I didn't know that either.
Sorry, I'll break you down. Don't let me very tired. Don't, don't drive over a bridge.
My glass is gonna, gonna work another 10 years.
I'm gonna go check Google, it crashed.
I'm glad I retired last week. Okay. Anything more? Amy? You wanna make a motion on the site plan, or you wanna go over the other one first?
Let's go over the other one first.
All right. So is the motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Isn't there something I need to read on this one?
Like, continue, open the continuation of the hearing for elevated routes. Special program.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to open the Halifax Planning Board hearing that's been continued from Thursday, April 7th, to, I, I think we had it last time too, but anyways, to tonight, May 5th, at 7:41 PM on elevated routes. Owner 319 Mod Ponset LLC for a marijuana establishment to be located at 319 Mod Ponset Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, as shown on the Sessors Map 63, Lot 27, Book 04029, Page 5. The applicant seeks to obtain a special permit to operate an adult-use retail marijuana dispensary as defined under Halifax zoning bylaws Sections 1673 and 1677. Schedule of Use Regulation, Specific Use Regulations for Marijuana Establishments, Area Zone Business, File Number 963.
Okay.
In a second.
Is the motion to open the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we open the public hearing, comments?
You want me to go, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Go to the floor first, okay. Um, the board had asked from the last special program hearing to add a 500-foot circle to the locust map we provided. The board has a copy of that. Now has it up here, so we've, we've added that to the map. We should have it probably as well as attached to the 11 by 17 we provided.
On the second page.
Yep.
Yes.
Get that, the second page. They added the circle, they didn't have the 500-foot circle on the other one.
Yeah, the, the 500-foot circle was informational, by law, I believe, it was 300 feet. The board had just asked for informationally to add the 500 feet at the request of Flower and Soul. I think they had to do that as well. So we provided that additional information.
Now we have, no marijuana establishment shall be located within 500 feet, linear feet of any school or childcare facility or where children generally congregate. That's why we asked you to add it, 'cause it is in our bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Not the 300, we're the 500.
Right, you're right, the bylaw has a 500-foot requirement, but on the locust map requirements, it, it wasn't part of that. So we added it to demonstrate that it complies with the...
Oh, yeah.
Section, right?
Yeah, because we needed it.
Any other further information on that?
No, there, we covered, I think, everything during the last meeting. The board wanted, just, you know, just to, Mr. Point, you know, just be able to demonstrate the compliance with that section of the bylaw, which is why we added that. One, to demonstrate our due diligence, that we had evaluated that previously, but also so the board could review it infinitely. We sent the locust map to the Bureau of Insurance, he looked at it. I don't wanna speak for him, since he's here, but we, we did include that in our filing, the updated one as well.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
And did you send in new plans, adjusted plans with full sets?
I, I believe so. Do you, do you have the full set of that?
I don't have that, no. No, I didn't get it. I didn't see that.
We can get those, we sent those in.
And on that, you include the 500-foot?
Yes.
On the full set?
Yes, this is, this is the updated plan, this 500, it's in blue, it's unfortunately, prints very light, so.
No, but I mean in the full-size set.
Yes, that's actually just a copy of the full-size set, so, um...
We can leave this, right?
Of the, of the revised, your revised plans?
Yeah, I can leave that, those plans with you, you'll have at least one copy.
I might be a stickler and ask you to show me this area expanded so I can see the eight feet, just, just...
I think Al can take you through, so he did pretty extensive due diligence on map overlays, or take it through, kinda what we did there.
So fortunately, there are county layouts. Um, the county, back in the day, I don't think they do it anymore, to make roads safer, et cetera, they would come at the behest of the town, they'd be petitioned by the town to straighten and widen roads. So in that light, there are county layouts for all of these roads. Um, on Ponset Street, I think this is County Decree Number 1401, this is 818, and this is 1236, County Decree 1236. On those layout plans, they have mathematic, they have bearings and distances that define the roadway, the arcs, all of that math. So I was able to plot each of those layouts and then combine them. They weren't on the same bearing system, but you can rotate them mathematically, so they all become one layout. On top of that, I added the, the record plan, a copy of which is on record at the Plymouth Reg Street Deeds. It too is tied into the county layout, they show the distance to abound, et cetera. So I was able to definitively show where that line is. This also has a layout, a, a record plan that's tied into this county layout, so I was able to tie that into that county layout. So when I put all that together, I get 508.4 feet from this corner to that point.
You see where I would be like, I'm, I'm just looking at this from reading the bylaws and just doing my job.
Hard to say.
But right here, it just, it looks so, and I know Pat said that, but is there a way to blow it out to show it so that we can have it in our file to show the residents if they ever came in?
The other thing we could potentially do for the board is send in Al's, what he just described, 'cause we knew it was close, so we did... Because we knew it was close, so we did very extensive due diligence, as you just heard him lay out. We didn't guess, we didn't go off GIS, I hope for the best.
Yeah.
A pretty extensive due diligence, so we could, if it's acceptable to the board, as maybe a condition, submit the due diligence that he just went through in a memo format. So it's on record for the town to have. So if somebody comes back later, we can say.
I just don't want anybody saying you allow this, and within 500 feet, and blah, 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 blah.
We're happy to provide this point, Dr. Chair.
Okay.
So my memo outlines each county layout, the decree number, I think I included the plan book in the page. And I'd be happy to share all that with Mr. Brennan, or I could give him the references and trust but verify my research, so, either way.
I like the trust but verify. No offense.
As our president once said.
Hey, hey, President?
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Oh, sure.
That make sense to you, Pat?
Yeah, sure. I'll touch base with Al tomorrow, I can get that information from him and verify it. I just looked at GIS, and that's what I told Amy, it looks to be about 510 feet, so GIS was fairly accurate.
Any other issue? Anything? Any more other comments?
Is, thank you, Brian, has a floor plan been provided of the actual retail?
It hasn't been submitted to us, no.
I don't remember that, there may have been a retail packet, I just don't have that.
I didn't see one.
I know the building inspector had.
Well, oh, it's definitely not submitted to the town. We just pull up the filing.
Jim's on, should we ask him?
I did look at it at the building inspector's office.
Yeah, we definitely talked with the town.
Jim's on. Jim? Jim Perry? Am I not speaking loud enough?
Hello?
Oh, hey.
Hello?
Hi, you have the, how are you, you have the floor plan for 319 Mon Pontet Street in your office?
Yes, I do.
Anybody have any specific questions? I think I kind of agree with what I'm seeing now.
I've been taking a look at it.
Yeah, I'm just remembering the differences of the teller lines, and those are being set up sort of like you have at Flower and Soul, and then they already had their.
I think the teller line's gone, right?
Yeah, the change of that, and then they had the vaults. The true vaults, right?
And you've got the delivery and the back.
Yeah, we showed that on the site plan.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, you know, candidly greatly appreciate our competitor coming in, but I think that, you know, these are significantly different projects. It's like any other town, if one neighbor came in to have a deck, and another neighbor came in to have a deck, it doesn't mean those are the same thing. We have complied with all the requirements of the bylaw, all the requests of the board. Everything's been sent and peer reviewed, the peer reviewer took a measurement of 510 feet. We have substantial due diligence, we just present to the board that verifies that distance, and maybe it's with a little bit higher degree of accuracy. And, but I think one thing that maybe is getting lost in translation with the other companies, that this is different because this is a pre-existing use, and we're using the resources in the same way they were used previously. And that is substantially different than maybe a totally new use, or taking a building and repurposing it completely. Not, it's just, we're trying to, you know, our competitors try and put a round peg in a square hole, it doesn't work. This, this project, I think the board's been very fair about evaluating it based on its individual merits, but I think it's worth noting that there are differences, you know, with pre-existing conditions, with existing signage, which we're reducing impacts on.
Of course.
You know, maintaining landscaping, so on and so forth, so certainly can appreciate the effort and the intentions, but I think it's, I hope the board, you know, considers that we've really tried to be diligent here, responding to the town's questions, comments, concerns, provide those to a peer reviewer to get third-party assessment. And I just, you know, I just wanted to offer that to the board for your consideration. You know, we're really trying to make sure we have this, this right.
Absolutely, and we're just making sure that we're doing everything to make sure that all the bylaws are followed for the residents that elected us.
Totally, I think the board's doing a great job. It's a little frustrating that we're trying, you know, the competitors trying to put a round peg in a square hole, and they maybe don't understand that some of these things, you know, we're reducing impacts on signage, we're reducing impacts here, we're maintaining things there. Those are just different considerations for the board. I know you understand that, I guess I'm just putting it on the record as they continue to, you know, make comments about how it's related to the project.
Yeah, it's part of a hearing, it's part of a hearing, and we have to consider everything that's put in front of us.
Sure.
Yeah, I truly appreciate where Al's advice is coming from, I've done about seven of these now. I'm just making sure that it's looked at through the same lens. You know, and regardless of bylaws and such, I more so, you know, have things been scrutinized and looked at the same way, like, for example, order mitigation plans, security diversion to minors, has all that been addressed? Like it was with Fire and Soul?
I believe that you've talked to the police chief.
All of that has been, absolutely, we addressed that at the last hearing as well.
And the fire chief is also on right now, too, if we had any issues?
And he has been through the property several times, yeah.
And has council provided guidance on what the town considers a place where kids congregate relative to the ice cream stand?
I don't believe that it would be considered just a kid's place, because then kids actually ride their bikes to Walmart, and Cumberland Farms, and malls, bike shop, and, you know, things like that.
And to be fair, you're very opposed to my establishment, so we're a childcare center, so it is going to put that up there.
You're not even notified.
And I've never notified, that's not why I'm here. I've never received any information regarding.
You know, that's interesting, so I think on that, the next time we have a marijuana dispensary, we probably need a butters that would go 500 feet, right, instead of the 300?
We're more than 500.
Yes.
Just, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we're getting a little bit off, I mean, you know, we have bylaws that we have to follow, the 300 is what we have to follow, we have to consider the 500 feet, and, you know, notice goes up to the public, too, so.
You don't live in the town, you don't, you don't have a business in the town.
Right, but, but I mean, it goes out as a public notice, so, you know, it's advertised in the paper.
My parents are going to need to go there, you know.
Yeah.
Me too.
Not when you work.
All right, so, if we don't have any more input, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I will make a motion to close the hearing for 319 Mon Pontet Street, Elevated Roots, 319, yep.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, before you make the motion, I just wanted to ask one other thing of the board, if I may?
Sure.
Could we get the, given that the peer reviewers reviewed the GIS data for the distance, and the board, the art sub-engineer, at your testimony tonight as to how they calculated it, as part of the decision, could we get the, submit the due diligence as a condition to the approval? Given that it's already been looked at by the peer reviewer? So we'll just follow up as a condition to the special permit to submit the due diligence?
Oh, you mean put it as a condition on the site plan?
Well, I think we talked about.
I mean, I'm sorry, I meant the special permit.
Yeah, just as a condition to the special permit that we submit it within, I don't know, five days, two days?
That, that would be how we would do that.
Yeah, okay, great, perfect, I appreciate it, thank you. I just wanted.
No worries, good thoughts.
It was entered in as evidence for the special.
Correct, and we'll just follow up with the, with the memo.
So there's a motion to close the public hearing, is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Is it the pleasure of the board to vote on the application? The site plan?
I'm marking it out right now. And we're going to do the site plan and the special permit separately?
Yes.
And everybody is okay with the parking spaces being of different sizes and the whole nine because of the non-conforming, we'll agree? I mean, the grandfathered non-conforming use, correct? Everybody?
Good with that?
For discussion, we're here to do it.
Well, we've already talked about it.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I'm going over it. Thank you.
Did you guys hear Jim okay?
What's that?
Did you guys hear Jim okay?
Yes.
Do you agree?
What is it?
Agree, as far as what?
That we're, we're in conformance with that because of the grandfathered use?
I guess, what do you think? I mean, you've been around a lot longer than me, you know, is that, we're.
It's, it's an approved site plan, it's already in existence, and we like going over to Walmart saying, you know, Walmart goes out and K-Mike comes in or something, and the parking's already there. Changed since then, you know.
I can see that, if you think about it on that point, and then relay it over. Okay. So what was the difference with Flower and Soul, we had spots that needed to be put in, they needed to be painted, correct?
Yeah.
They weren't done yet.
Well, it's just a different scenario, that was a brand-new building that had never really had anything there yet.
Right.
Like you said, it's multi-use, too.
And these buildings are already in existence, it's already been.
Oh, yeah, it's been there for a long time.
Okay. I just think it's important to go over it, okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 319 Plymouth Street. The site plan. C1, January 26, 2022.
What's, what's your revision date on there?
Revised April.
11th.
11th?
28th.
28th? April 28th?
Okay, I'll redo that motion, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan that was originally put in on January 26, 2022, with the final revisions on April 28, 2022.
And how many pages is that?
Two pages.
Two pages.
I think I heard Plymouth Street.
Did I say Plymouth Street? I don't know.
319 Mon Pontet.
Okay, revise again, my bad. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 319 Mon Pontet Street. Originally drawn on January 26, 2022, with final revisions on April 28, 2022, with two pages.
And the ties or whatever for the circle being submitted?
That's the special permit.
Special permit.
Well, it's on the site plan.
And the 500-foot mark, but this is site plan, okay.
That's where it shows, oh.
Okay, and the 500-foot radius for linear distances, which is where I'm going to put in my caveat. All conditioned upon the fact of finding out that it is absolutely 500 feet or more.
Well, well, that's, that's going to be in the special permit, but if you want to get the dimensions on the site plan so you can see the 500, that's the site plan.
So you want us to put that on the site, well, it is on that.
It is, it is dimensioned on, it is a 500-foot dimension.
But, I mean, we were talking about confirming that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I was, so that's what I was trying to do.
Be confirmed on the site plan.
And the special permit. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Because where are you going to tie it to on the special permit?
Stand corrected.
Be tied to on that plan.
I'll get it right one of these times.
Do you want us to include the supporting documentation as a condition to the site plan?
Yes, that's what I'm getting at.
Making sure I got the right one.
That's what I'm getting at, I wrote down notes, hold on. I was thinking that I needed to do that on the special permit, but I'm doing it on the auto.
It's, it's just so that it's going to tie it to that plan, because a special permit is, it's not going to, it's not going to tie it to the plan, if you know what I mean.
Right, so the condition is to submit the memo that Al just walked you through?
I was just going to read it, yeah. I'm just looking for what I wrote down, okay.
Because later on, we wouldn't be tying it to that plan.
Now I'm going to write a couple of things down, so I don't say it. Do I have to say the original date, or can I just, yeah, right?
The plans?
Yeah.
Well, when they were, when they were drawn, I mean, it's not going to be, this won't be recorded or registered, so, yeah, whatever, you can get on there. Then we're going to need some copies so we can get them signed. The site plans, the full, you know, full size sets.
I'll leave this one with you tonight, and we'll get whatever additional copy you need.
That way we can sign that, we get one signed.
How many full sets do you need?
Well, one will have to go to the building inspector, why don't we get
Yeah.
Yeah, town clerk, why don't we get five?
Five. Five.
Do we need a mile out in?
No, it doesn't get recorded, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 319 Mon Pontet Street in Halifax, Massachusetts. Original plan, drawn January 26, 2022. And last updated on April 28, last revision done on April 28, 2022. With the condition of the due diligence being given to our PR engineer, Pat Brennan, for confirming the distance of 500 feet or more, the special permit and the site plan will. The special permit and the site plan will be nullified void if found to be less than 500 feet.
To where?
To any abutting, I'm sorry, linear foot properties that would have a pouring license.
Existing.
Existing. Existing pouring license. Is that a mouthful, or what?
Would it be appropriate to cite that parcel that we're measuring?
That would probably be there.
Only because, just so we're clear on what we're measuring? Do you know that parcel?
I don't know that parcel.
No, no, I saw it out.
I don't know.
But it's harmony, like, as it's by
It's 284.
284?
I'll look it up. You want me to say it again?
I'm sorry.
I'll be impressed if you remember.
It's worth getting right the first time.
Yes, it is. Hundred percent. For the fourth.
And then we'll ditto that into the special permit.
Yeah.
It's 284.
284, thank you.
Do you want me to give you the lot and parcel?
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm getting it.
Map 63-8-0.
Six
Look at you.
63-8-0.
I didn't look up, so I thought it was that.
Dash zero?
I thought it was Flower and Soul, and I was like
63-8?
Dash zero.
Dash zero.
I was like
Okay.
Okay. So can I have, so 63-8?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna just double-check. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 319 Monpont Street in Halifax. Elevated roots is the application.
Along with that.
Okay. And with the condition that all due diligence that was done to find the linear distance between lot 63, I'm sorry, map 63, lot 8, will be 500 linear feet or more from 319 Monpont Street. That sound right? Oh, I didn't say, on the plans drawn January 26, 2022, with final revisions on April 28, 2022.
Along with the approval of the sign?
And the approval of the sign.
As submitted?
As submitted on
April 28?
April 28, 2022.
Please, is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And so we'll we're ready to move on to the special permit? I'll make a motion to approve, thank you, lot 63, right? Make a motion to approve the special permit under file number 963 by elevated roots for a special permit at 319 Monpont Street, with plans submitted and first drawn on January 26. Final revisions April 28, 2022. Are you gonna tell me to add something? With the condition that must be met to confirm that the distance of 500 linear feet is between 319 Monpont Street and map 63-8. If it is not found to be 500 feet or more, the special permit and site plan are nullified void.
For the permit for the operation of the
This permit is for the petitioner seeking a permit for the operation of adult-use retail marijuana dispensary.
Any conditions?
The condition was that they confirmed the linear footage from 319 Monpont Street, Halifax, to the lot, map 63, lot 8. That it must be 500 feet.
Any other conditions?
Nope.
Good at that. Do I need to clean it up, or can we go with that?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time. We'll get the documents over.
Great.
Would you like me to leave this copy with you?
If you could, yeah.
I didn't know you were in the room. Good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll get the documents over.
Our pro into the exam.
Good luck.
When you
Yes, I'll put that tomorrow. Should I copy it forward on the email?
I'll pass it.
You want to send it by email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you very much. Okay. I have a motion to open continued public hearing for River Street.
I'm gonna open it, isn't it?
Yeah. That's elevated roots.
Oh, my gosh.
Here, here you go.
I'm just gonna motion the hearing open.
Okay.
I'm gonna motion that the Halifax Planning Board open the application for site plan review for owner VS Hasiotis &amp; Sons at 115 River Street, Halifax, Massachusetts. Map number 117, lot 1B. Advocate name, River Street Associates.
Okay, you have a motion to open the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amy?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you to the board for having us again. I appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. At the last presentation of the page to the board, we talked about proposed changes to the plan for the River Street Associates solar array proposed off of River Street. There were a couple of questions that came up about changes to the plan, and so the board referred the plans to peer review, to AMRI engineers. We are in receipt of a memo from AMRI engineers, which reviewed the plan and described their findings. Is the board familiar with the memo?
Yep.
Generally, the findings? So, having received that memo, and first of all, thank you very much to AMRI and to the board for the timely reviewing and comments on the changes. We focused on the comment section, of which there were four numbered comments that AMRI engineers submitted, and taking those into consideration, we added a couple of notes and very minor changes to the plan. So if it pleases the board, I'd be happy to walk through those notes.
Absolutely.
Which, I also provided those in an email to Joanne, the owner, who she distributed them, but that sounds good. So, comment number one, and here I'm just reading the comment from AMRI engineers. Number one, the typical galvanized chain-link fence detail on sheet C105, she'd specify the space between the bottom of the fence and ground surface to be six inches, to be consistent with the notes on sheet C102, in the detail on 2018 plans. So, in response to that comment, we have added that note to we have added that note to sheet C105.
This is my thing.
So, sheet C105, there's a note down here.
Point of post?
I don't know. It's a
Yeah.
No, it's maintained fence 152 millimeters, six inches off existing ground for small animal passage. That's just the typical fence detail.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we set you up over here? Do we have a paper clip?
I was gonna say, you have a So, I guess before I go on, is there any questions from the board about that detail? Okay, great. Comment number two, the typical road section on sheets C102 and C104 of the 2018 plan specifies an 18-foot wide road with one foot shoulders for a total width of 20 feet. The typical road section on C109, the current plan specifies the same width. However, the typical road section on sheet C102, the current plan specifies a 20-foot wide road with one foot shoulders for a total width of 22 feet. Total width on both sets of plans scales to 20 feet, and we believe that the 20-foot total width is more than adequate for access roads. So the typical road section on sheet C102, the current plan, should be revised. 18-foot width with one foot shoulders. So, we have made that change, which I would describe as just a clerical kind of oversight. So, if you look at the details shown on sheet C102, it does specify an 18-foot wide permanent access drive with one foot wide shoulders. Any questions from the board?
No.
Support number three, we assume that the proposed transformers and battery container have some type of spill/leak containment. However, this should be confirmed, and if they do not, then we recommend spill/leak containment to protect groundwater and nearby wetland resources from hazardous materials. A spill response plan should be prepared and submitted to building and fire departments. So, in response to this comment, I'll just note that on the original plan, we did not have any sort of a secondary containment vessel. One of the reasons for that is because it's the material that's contained in the transformer is 99% soybean oil. So it's generally not considered a hazardous substance, but out of abundance of caution, we did add secondary containment hook to these plants, and we will construct them. We've done it on other facilities we operate, and we're happy to do it, so. That detail is contained on sheet C103, and the specifications are on sheet C109. Actually, I think in my email, that was an error, but the so she's transformer secondary oil containment sheet detail on C107. So 107 is where the detail is contained. And I'll show you a picture of what that looks like. Which is a schematic of oil containment hook, it's this schematic down here.
Okay. So it just goes in there?
Yeah, it's really, it's intended to be a void that oil can migrate into if it starts leaking out of the transformer for any reason. So it's just a place for it to be, it contains before it can be removed and safely disposed of. It will be filled with, I believe it's the stone of the 45% void ratio. So it's filled with something solid, but it will have enough void to accept the volume of oil that would come out if the transformer completed the containment. Any questions from the board on that addition?
Nope.
The last one, comment number four, the applicant should specify a maintenance plan for post-construction. At a minimum, the plan should specify grass mowing frequency and procedures to revegetate areas of bare soil. So we have added this note, which is here on sheet C102, and generally it refers to the process for revegetating the site. It reads, areas within solar array will be revegetated post-construction to replenish the area to meadow condition. Area will be mowed two times per year to allow sufficient vegetative cover without impacting solar production. And I just wanna note for the board that we operate, we own and operate the array next door as well, and we would implement the same vegetative management procedures. And that one is pretty successfully revegetated, as anyone who's driven by may see. So, very likely that they would be on the same sort of vegetation management schedule. Same, you know, mowing contractor and that sort of thing. With that, I think those are the comments that came out of the peer review. I'm happy to take any other questions that the board might have this time. But, you know, appreciate the peer review and the feedback.
Do you have anything else?
He read my comments, so I don't have to say it.
So, my concern on the last plan that they had and the legend is just two, they just had two different legends, correct? Like, it was, it didn't have any bearing on anything? The one that we approved, not this board approved last time, and then this current one here. They had all different legend?
Yeah, it was
benign?
This one's a lot more clear than the last set.
So it's better? I just wanted to understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were good enough to send me the original plans, and Joanne sent me stuff as well. So that's the original, I was able to compare the stuff, so
Awesome.
They were very cooperative.
Awesome. Thank you.
Break, anything? All right. So, is it gonna be a motion to approve the amended site plan?
Have you already gone through all the other boards?
Yes, we have gone through the cons comm, and we have I was told that we had received our order conditions, and she asked for detail, and that she was gonna get me the final one for signing, and that the I was told that we had received our order conditions and she asked for detail and that she was gonna get me the final one for signing and that the board had said it just signed it. And I'm not aware of whether or not they signed it yet.
Okay.
So have you gotten us revisions of those changes in the plans?
The plans, yes. And I, yeah, I sent those a couple days ago.
At these?
For me, it's in there, yeah. I, I bore them to you and they're also right here.
I mean, the sign?
To sign.
Oh, no.
The big ones?
Everything is in the pencil.
So I'm seeing March.
Do we have hard copies of this?
These are all March.
You know what, you are welcome to these ones if you'd like them.
Yeah, we'll need, yeah, we'll need the five sets.
You need five sets, okay. We can certainly get you those. And, yeah.
I mean, you can leave those for tonight so we have a set that we're approving.
Yep, absolutely, I can certainly do that.
And then we have nothing to do with pilot programs or anything like that that we can make sure that it happened? That any agreements made with the assessors office?
No, we're doing the site plan. So the last revision date you have on there is?
I believe it's
Is that right on the plan?
Yes, May 4th, 2022. And the comment is updated per town review feedback.
Yeah. Do you want to do it? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve it?
Yeah.
What do I have to say now? This is the first time I'll make motions.
Want me to help you?
Sure. Making motion to approve application for site plan review. Applicant River Street Associates LLC for 115 River Street Halifax. Map 117 Lot 1B. Amendment existing site plan approval file number 18-SPR-117 with new plan set showing revised layout.
Revised plan?
Revised May 4th, 2022.
Have a motion or is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice job.
I'm not gonna do that again. First time around.
So I'll leave these plans with you and we'll reach out and talk.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here.
Just wanted to thank you all for coming over.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You took all your comments from me?
It's nice when they address. You don't need me after long, right? You got, you got the revised as to what I sent over?
Right. Yep.
I'm just waiting for the call. I talked to the paper, he's gonna call me before the page so I can be able to run into the file.
Okay, did you check on those plans? The copy that you got?
Oh.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right.
Do you want to close the hearing?
I'll close the hearing of 115 River Street, application for site plan review.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we have discussion magical use?
That's us.
Okay.
Dr. Jane Shawn Kennedy. We're just here today because we own 933 Plymouth Street and looking to expand over to 150 Industrial Drive for two classrooms over there. Went to the building, or contractor went to the building department to pull the permit and he denied the permit for the inside because he said that it needs to be a change of use. For childcare centers, you need an E use group. That particular space was categorized as an E use group back in 2003 and hasn't changed. He said it was coded wrong back in 2003 and it should be a business E use group. So I'm here today to say, can I make it an E use group?
Which it is on record.
It's on record, yep, I have the certificate of occupancy from 2003. So it's always been an E use group. And then I don't know what happened over the years for it to change or never change, it's always been E.
This is the dance studio now? So the use that you're proposing is?
Childcare.
And what's the requirement for your parking there?
For childcare center?
Yeah, I mean, how many employees?
I think it's, oh, there would only be three, it's only two small classrooms, so there would only be four additional educators over there.
And then the parking for the parents?
So there's no parking, it's drop-off? So it has to pick up, pick up and drop off is all of it, so parents never stay. So it's more, they drop off in the morning and then stay, drop off anywhere between seven and nine. So it's never consistently a full parking lot, if that makes sense.
And just so I can say that the front of the building, we had a twice the size preschool there in the front before drawing back more, so it was kinda kept on in there. So we ran out of there for 10 years, 10 years already to hold front of them.
And the, and the dance studio was in the back?
In the back, so.
So now you're taking over the dance studio?
We're just taking over one dance studio right now for two classrooms.
Is there more than one back there?
It's like one unit, it's one unit, but we're just keeping one studio to open for like a gross motor room, it won't be a classroom. Just to take the kids over in that space.
And it's 933 and 1 Plymouth Street and 150 Industrial, is that what you said?
Yeah, it'll be, so we're gonna have to apply for a separate license for it. It'll be called magical years, but for the state, it would be like, you know, magical years too, you know, but it would have its own separate license to the ground.
So so what we really do is we need to take a look at the site plan for the parking. Johnny Max is in there now.
I have to go.
And
Oh, that's just the one, let me get the Johnny Max.
Yeah, do you mind coming over?
Actually, I wanna go over, see if you can look.
So this is Plymouth Street?
Yeah.
This would be where Johnny Max is?
Yeah.
So you're gonna access through here?
Yeah. So there's all these parking spaces here, there's all these here and we have
Yeah, you're fine. How many parking spaces were needed for Johnny Max?
I think, I don't think that there was any change in that.
That's just a to-go anyway.
It's just a
It's just a go, yeah, none of them.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'm familiar with that place, I've been picking up my granddaughter from Kansas City for years.
Oh, yes, Ellie, yes, yes, Ellie's too.
Yeah, Ellie went to
Your daughter, yes. That's right.
So it'd be 48 spaces?
No, it's, it's
It's 50, yeah.
Yes. Can I see your
So that's based on one space?
Thank you.
I don't see if there would be any problem there.
Oh, no, because it's, as you said, it's just employees and they can't pick the kids up.
Yeah, then, I mean, the kids are there for 10 hours, so they're there for 20 if that's
Yeah, the main thing was that E group, which were already, it's a dancers education.
Well, I guess.
Well, the thing that he's calling out is when there's a change in use, you need to come to us, that's
Yeah, all right, yeah, which is, I understand, yeah, so.
Yes.
And you're only taking half of the back?
Yes.
Both.
It's just that with, no, no, with it, the whole studio is one unit.
So it's split this way?
Yeah.
You're taking the whole back?
We're taking the whole back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we only put two schools in, so two classrooms. This is a gross motor room, that's staying as a dance school, as the rooms will not change anything in there.
Not as a dance school, as a
No, it's a gross motor room.
Like a place to
Will not donate any construction in that room.
Oh, okay.
They're just putting up two walls for two classrooms.
On this side?
Yeah.
And that has bathrooms in it already?
Yes, everything's original.
So basically you sorta did switch to a B and now it's back to an E?
So it was never an E, so the thing, I did a little research, but it seems like the E group has changed over the years. I could, the building inspector was saying that dance is considered a training, so, but it's really not, it's an educational. We could go on to the
Okay.
But, yes. It's been categorized as an E use group, because if you go back to 2003, the categorizations of use groups were different, I think, at that point. And they've just evolved over the years.
Okay, so what we'd be looking to do is get an approval for the daycare for the site plan that's, the existing site plan.
So does the dance group do a site plan and
No, we have, we have the same, we did.
Okay, so they don't need to do an application or anything, we can do it now?
Yes.
Building inspector just wanted us to
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should verify.
Yep, that makes sense.
Well, thank you, I'm squeezing myself.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I can see it here, so I'll make a motion to approve that this is an use group B and that we can allow the classrooms to be put in the dance studio.
According to the site plan?
According to the site plan in 50 spots.
Can I just make one more quick question?
Sure.
So with, just to make sure there's no discrepancies
Always.
So with an E use group in childcare, you need an E use group and then you need an I-4 for like infants and toddlers. So it's never been an issue before, I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that that will also be not a problem.
Does that create more parking?
Well, if you're my band, we have five. So maybe, but no.
It's just an age group for kids.
Yeah.
Okay, so amend my motion to be an E14.
Yes, perfect.
All of the parts the same.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome. Tell your mom I said hi.
Recently? I'm here to be with River Street Associates, I think you were asking a question about another entity, so I'm happy to have a sidebar conversation going on. You asked about the assessment, I'm happy to talk about it, but it's for another entity, so I didn't have to do it.
Oh, that's fine, I was meaning for your specific project, nothing else.
Anyway, if you have a moment, I'm, you know, happy to
Okay.
Take a minute?
If, if, you know, I can use the call some other times, I'm not here on that business, so I
Yeah, no, that's okay, I was just making sure, I'm kinda going over with the board what needs to happen and doing all the checkboxes.
Yep, absolutely. So I'm sure I'll touch basically any of it, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You're for Pastor Lane? We don't have anybody here tonight for Pastor Lane. We're supposed to be getting an update tonight. And he called and said that he was out of the country, he's not back. And that he would have to make it at the next meeting.
There's still a whole bunch of tree stumps and everything else just sitting there. And I'm still waiting for my public records request as to where all of the documentation that was in the folders has gone, because it is no longer there.
When did you request it?
About two weeks ago.
I'll follow up with that for you.
Okay, 'cause I, I just don't understand why public, like, why stuff has gone out of all these folders.
I agree with you.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we'll wait for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sorry about that.
Thanks, Tina.
All right. Okay, let's Pastor Lane. We have 5G and 40I, we'll skip those and we'll go to
Well, yeah, we can move on to
Scott Burgess, Hilldale Lane.
Hey, Joe. Joe Webby, Webby Engineering. With me is Scott Burgess, I think you've known Scott.
Hi, Scott.
Also with me is Paul Jackson, Paul Jackson is the well, he's married to the Ask Realty Trust. So he's here representing that lot. But in any case, Scott's been talking to the board on several occasions about what he can do back here with his land on Hilldale Lane. And what he would like to do possibly with the grace of the planning board is shorten the road, the proposed road, and then have one 22-acre lot for itself. And then the Ask Realty Trust would have their lot, which is right here. And what he's willing to do is to pave approximately 500 feet of road and then, you know, cul-de-sac, a small cul-de-sac and have a driveway, two driveways at the end. One going this way and one going, that he's gonna have to get to his house. And then, of course, the, these two will already have driveways. He would also like to have overhead wires and country drainage. Would propose that we could put a big detention basin right in this area and have all our water come just down with berms and come across to a big basin here. There's actually a basin there now, but we would just make it pretty. But basically, that's, that's what he would like, he just had a broaching this idea to the board to see if they would be willing to amend the subdivision to, to this, to this section would be abandoned and it would end like that. For two lots.
Where would his house go?
His house is gonna, there's a big hill, a big
Oh, still like out in the back, like, kinda like you were thinking a few years ago? Right, before you'd, where you were gonna maybe have an in-law, right?
That's right.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I have the records plant with me if you'd like to see them. I also have copies of this for the board too.
Thanks.
So bas- basically, you're gonna get 150 feet of frontage for the lot to the left?
Yes, yeah, yeah, currently on Hilldale Lane, that frontage would go to here to here. But it would help us a little bit, or help Scott a little bit if we could reduce this to the cul-de-sac and get it right along the cul-de-sac. And then this little piece here will go to Ask Realty Trust. So this would, this would still be a viable lot. And then Scott would have his 20
So how does Scott's driveway work, does it go up through that?
It's gonna have to cross right through here.
Okay, so it's not gonna go across that corner of the lot then?
No. No, uh, well, this is, this is the wetland that's been.
Delanted.
Delanted by, and I believe it's still current right now, right, 'cause you went back and got it all redel- redelanted. So he's, he's gotta get across this dri- this ditch. And this is the, you know, obviously, that would be a way, but this is really the best way for him to get around to right there.
Drawbridge?
Yeah, probably drawbridge, yeah, well.
Dragons?
Yep. So I think we're, we're just here to, to ask questions.
'Cause there'd be plenty of frontage for the twenty-two acre lot.
Oh, plenty of frontage.
'Cause that's gonna start down at those, right there, right?
This is all, this all would be his frontage. This would be paved to the green, twenty-four feet of pavement. But he, we're, we're gonna try to do this without any catch bases. So that we have all this water come down this way, this water now comes down.
'Cause right now, the whole thing is fairly low.
Yes, it is, yeah.
I mean, you, I, I think when they originally did it, there really wasn't enough coverage to be able to put a pipe in the ground.
Yeah, yeah, I think they had.
Down, down to the beginning, I don't think the, you had coverage.
Yeah, we had to, I think they originally, what, we didn't do the plan, but I think originally they asked for reductions of fill on top, or how much fills on top of the pipe. And I think they got down to like one foot with classified pipe, and then they were running it down into here.
Were they, were they going back that far on the original plan? I thought they were doing country drainage at the beginning.
I don't have the, I just have a lining. Originally, this was gonna be the, the drainage water. Yeah, this one doesn't show the catch basins.
Of course.
Just please, please cut the whole section.
Do you wanna take this back as to not complete? Is that, is that your answer?
An infiltrator or something like that on the side.
So you're saying that wouldn't be there anymore, right?
Well, we, because if we, if we can get the water to go to here, like, by just surface water, then we can do it, yes.
It might be better than adding onto this road.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Because this, what they were proposing here was a good nice big basin catching the, I think there was a, I don't think there was any pipe.
No, I don't think there was any pipe, yeah.
That's what that was, is country drainage down to there. And I think they couldn't get this, these two catch basins up there, so that was why it went to that side. So we're gonna have to look at that, then write a David's. I don't know, is, is, if that's doable, yeah.
And what's up there for power right now?
Right, right now, some Brian's house gets power from this pole. And we, we, we went underground.
From the pole?
From the pole, and the nezareles here, they go, they go overhead.
Uh, overhead?
Yes. But there's a pole right there, so it's overhead to here.
And so probably in that. In that very wet area, it probably would be better to do overhead, do you think, in your expertise?
I, I think it would be, but I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, just because of the water and everything underground, are you thinking that?
No, I, I mean, you have a pole that's basically halfway back there now.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So you'd probably get away maybe one.
One pole, it's, I haven't looked at it, that's a big lot.
One pole would get you back to his lot?
Yes.
And then a pole, another pole on your lot.
And now it wouldn't really even be like a big subdivision, so it wouldn't be like we'd need to do the underground wires, correct?
Yeah, we don't need a trench wall or anything.
Thoughts?
No, I'm fine, we'll get the frontage, and, I mean, I've seen this come here so many times, there are different proposals, so.
Hopefully, this'll put it all to bed, hopefully.
I mean. 'Cause realistically, something's gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's going to a pretty big expense just to get that one lot back there, just paving all that road.
Scott's willing to do it.
Yeah, I mean.
And what are you talking for width of pavement?
Twenty-four feet.
I think it was originally twenty-two, but.
Well, twenty, well, whatever it was originally.
Yeah.
Originally, it was.
Tonne of water?
I'm just coming here just so it's easier, you can help me.
Maybe we go with water, but see if we can do two-inch main, two-inch line up there.
Just sit there, yeah. Yeah, I don't, yeah, position the last bit, yeah.
Yeah, twelve and twelve.
I think it's fifty thousand of.
And then on the corner, turn around, stability.
Yeah, we have to be able to get the fire, this is a radius forty-one, so that's eighty-four, eighty-two feet, if you can find it.
This will take a fire truck.
It's not your standard, I think.
A year ago, it was.
He's willing to do whatever you want him to do, but, you know.
Yeah.
Whatever the fire chief told him.
I actually had to buy some out of Upper State of New York.
That's the minimum is forty-one. Forty-one, eighty-two. To, to look at your fire truck.
For projects.
Right.
Well, I think you're in here to ask.
Yeah, we're here to ask if you're willing at least to see a modified plan.
So, so what, what would be, what would we be looking at for waivers?
Well, right, right now would be the overhead wires. Drainage, we're still gonna have drainage that's gonna be suitable to pass, but, you know what I mean? He's gonna, he's gonna redo the drainage. The water, the water, and I think that's, that's it.
So you're asking just to keep on well?
Yeah.
But so, you're not really a subdivision, though, so now.
So what are we, what are we looking at for like the?
This, this is.
Probably a retreat lot.
From here to here, it's five hundred feet.
Would you think that too? Retreat lot? Not like, maybe continue some of the things, like the, you know, there's already poles there to let him have a well that far back? It's better than, I think, some of the other things.
Run water, and they'd be nice to have a tonne of water, but that'd cost a small fortune to get it all the way in there. Even if you ran it too much line.
You know, the two little slot would be crazy.
Yeah, especially right now. And now, those are the only waivers?
No, I, well, we don't want the side, no sidewalks, we don't, I don't think we need sidewalks here, that would be up to the board. I can't think of any other waivers, would you? I mean, all your paving requirements, it would have to meet that.
And would this be proposed as a private road or a public road?
Private's, I don't file away.
The town maintains it now, and it's just tense grave.
Yeah, it's a dirt.
Yeah.
Seems like everybody'd be happy if it was paved. Given the other lots in there.
Well, we could never get this released from the covenant until it was different.
Right. And then there'd be another house built there?
Yeah, yeah, this is, you know, we're hoping that this always stays a viable lot, yes. That was, that lot was part of the trade.
To get in it.
With granny to, and we.
I remember that.
Some things take a while.
We learn.
Yes, time. I don't know, just, to me, it seems like we'd be continuing poles down as long as the drainage went in the right place. And I don't want a well, some people don't wanna have tonne of water. And it's not like we're pulling a huge subdivision where we even subdivision control or anything like that.
What are you proposing for cul-de-sac?
Yeah, right, right now, we're proposing the standard, you know, standard seventy-foot radius for the, uh.
Outside.
For the outside. Here, we're proposing forty-one feet radius, which is eighty-two feet.
So how's that work for, like, a fire truck?
That, that's, that's the minimum for a fire truck, like, yeah.
A ladder truck would be?
Ladder truck better have R and.
Okay.
Well, I'm just.
Good mirrors, good drive-in.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you pull into one of the driveways and back out.
Well, I, I, I think that probably, obviously, the, the fire, uh, the fire chief's gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Speak on this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let him decide that.
Yeah. Whatever he wants, we have to give him.
Right.
So, so it's eighty, eighty feet wide?
Yeah, eighty-two, which is, yeah.
I can imagine that the neighbors would be more happy with this.
Trees?
Cut them all down. Pave the rainforest.
I, I mean, on the way in.
I can put some trees if we need to, you know? You can't put them underneath the wires.
They might help your drainage.
Put a bunch of wills. Trees are always, trees are always a best thing.
Plant a few trees, should I? I think there's, there's like, I believe there's some already, the Bradfids. I don't know about the Nezareles.
I don't think so.
I think Brian has a couple right there at the, at the corner.
I never could have done that to them.
Couple of that, throw a few trees, I don't know.
And pole light at the edge of the driveway for lighting?
Yeah, they, yeah, they could do that, if Brian has that, just to.
Just to kind of mark, mark the road. Yeah, I mean, I would suggest maybe put something together like that.
Have you thought to run it by the fire chief, like, as you draw, right?
I think this is kind of like the first thought, right?
No, I mean, just to make sure that the cul-de-sac is drawn correctly in the first round, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Scott's already made two attempts, I believe, of.
Right. The hydrant and stuff, the one with the five hundred feet, so they weren't really doing stuff.
So is the hydrant right on, heywood?
Yeah, it's right opposite the.
Okay.
Right in there.
And everybody else is on well?
Well, yeah, Brian is, I think that Bradfids tied in, my sister tied in, I don't know about Nezareles.
I think it looks better than twenty or thirty units.
And I would hope to think that, like, the neighbors would be more pleased with that than any of the other plans? Besides your first one.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody had a problem with that one, I think that was money.
Um, if I could've got to do the, the in-law, it would've worked out fine, but no one wanted the in-law. I don't know why, you know, they wouldn't be able to see it. No offense, I don't like neighbors. I want to do, do what I need to make, you know?
I did bring along the, I think, chapter forty-one, the, the requirements for amendment for something. Figured if somebody wanted to. Basically, you have to go through the same thing, you have to have hearing about an notification.
Nobody's got a mortgage down there, right?
Some Brian does, but, no, there's no mortgage on this one.
I don't know.
And I don't have a mortgage.
That's really to protect the mortgage?
Yeah.
Yeah. Brian's house was already, yeah, right?
Yeah, Brian's, yeah, yeah, that was Dad's house, yeah.
Yeah, before the.
It was before the subdivision.
Yeah. So that was his driveway.
Well, it was actually my Dad's.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and then that was a swap.
Yeah, we gave, this was a retreat lot.
Right. We get, you gave that for the other.
This, we got that.
Yeah. You got a lot, didn't you?
Oh, wow.
That's what they call that, a lot, right?
Yeah.
Is that where you grew up?
No, I'm, I'm a pro.
Oh, okay. Well, you said your dad lived there, so I.
Yeah, Dad moved there, I think, in ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
Yeah. Yeah, his brother Steve built a house. And he built my sister's parents' house. And she's still living there. She was there a little earlier.
Yeah, before my time.
Yeah.
Well, not quite before your time.
Well, my, my, my time in the family. I got married in nineteen ninety-one.
I was gonna say, you got a couple more years than that.
Yeah. I got the wall spot approved, too.
Caesar texted me a while ago and asked me to have him check your phone.
Do you have a copy of this?
I, I do, I can, I can get a copy of that, yeah, that's all, that's all I'm looking, I didn't know if you needed a copy of this, or a copy of that. Yeah.
Joanne, can we have, um, this has nothing to do with you, sorry. Can we have electronic plans from one fifteen River Street and from three nineteen Plymouth Street?
Should we have?
Can we have them requested, the approved final plans, can we have them requested electronically as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, no problem.
I wanna read this again. It's already.
Fields.
I think I'm.
No, it's fine with me, as long as, you know, you know, who else, who else would have a problem with it besides fire and fire?
I don't think the butters would have a problem with it, but.
No. Well, Mike Nezarell will see earlier, if he, he couldn't hang out.
I saw him today.
He's a director by runs left on.
Yeah.
He's all for it. I don't see why anybody would be against it.
Yeah, it would prevent any further. Yeah, it would prevent any further fears. I don't have a problem with it.
I agree.
I, I would say, you know, you know, put something together.
Yeah, I, I just think that if you sat with the fire chief and made sure that that cul-de-sac was a, you know, a, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, a quick.
Just so that we don't have to go back and forth and around again.
So then we'd have to, we'd have to do a hearing for modification.
Yeah, you have to do the same, yeah, hearing, as if it was a.
So, so it comes in like a definitive?
Comes in exactly, amendment, but, yeah, it's ma- or modification, whatever they call it. You advertise it that way.
I mean, I, I would say, reach out to the, your butters.
And get their consent.
And I think part of the amendment is you have to, you know, once it's, let's say it goes along okay and everything's fine, then you have to also, abandon the original subdivision.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but at the same time, so it's not disappears.
At the same time, yeah. Because that's all on record.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, that's what the, this is all about, is being able to take that off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate you, Sam. We've seen you, I've been seeing you a lot.
I know, it's been a while. It was every night for a while.
I'm hoping it does.
It's a nice night, anyway.
Have luck.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good.
Nice to see you, Paul.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you.
All right.
Maybe we'll have tours again soon.
What's that?
Maybe we'll have tours again soon. Yeah, I heard that, um, some photographers in the Marshfield area are three weeks out. So we're starting to get inventory.
Okay.
Yeah.
Stay and see me.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, you too.
One fifteen.
Yep, one fifteen, mother. Okay.
Okay. Got some builders? Rick said he wanted to make more motions, is that what he said?
Do what?
You wanted to make more motions, is that what you said earlier?
Yeah, drop the fuel prices.
Okay. I'll make a.
Painful. Twenty-one gallons today cost me a hundred and thirty-five bucks.
You're saying six seventy-five by the end of the week, what's that, tomorrow?
That's disgusting.
The diesel.
Home heating oil is like almost six dollars a gallon.
It's gonna be over.
That's more than it ever has been by over a dollar or something.
No, it's, it's more than twice what it was a year ago. It's a killer. I wanna just, I got like, what, three diesel trucks, I wanna leave them all yet. It's just not worth it.
I know.
But what are you gonna do?
These, um.
Make a motion to approve the planning board account?
Yeah.
Amy Reengineering invoice number one five eight seven six A. I'm gonna have to do it again. Is this the night of Amy reading motions multiple times?
These came from the building department. Building inspector, yeah. Yeah. Did you make a motion?
I'll make it again. I'll make a motion to plant, um, to pay a planning board, um, bill for Amy Reengineering invoice number one five eight seven six A for two and a half hours for three nineteen Monpont Street elevated routes. Three hundred and eighty dollars.
Is the motion, is her second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to pay a pa- pay.
Pay.
Pay Amy Reengineering invoice number one five eight seven six B for two point two five hours. Um. Three nineteen Monpont Street elevated routes in the amount of three se- three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Motion to pay the villagers a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a mo- a move, another motion to, uh, pay Amy Reengineering invoice number one five eight seven six C for pasty lane in the amount of one sixty-seven twenty-one.
Motion is her second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have minutes?
Yes.
Don't need to be signed. Of, of the two?
Of the two that I've already been approved, but then there's, um.
Where is it?
Was there one that we couldn't approve last time because it was? Mark and I or something like that? Mark hadn't been here and I don't remember, I don't remember now.
There just needs to be, there's a, like, three signatures, people that are concerned.
Okay.
So if you go and, and, or some sign, like, you need to break them.
Okay.
Just starting to worry, John, he had a lot of.
This one's direct.
Okay, and then we have April seventh. Put a mark, make two me.
Hmm?
Make two me.
Two, like, two.
It's all hands. Holy cow, Joanne. I said, holy cow, with all that piping.
That one's on the road, they're full.
Where? Sometimes it rolls uphill, huh?
You good?
I'm good. You good with the minutes?
I'll make a, um, a motion to approve the April seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes as, um, written.
The motion is her second?
Her second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, um.
We'll get the doors. Meeting minutes. You wanna do the five G?
Well, we know too, too much to say about that since it's F C, um, FCC driven mostly. I mean, they really veto us or trump us on anything that we do, right?
What's that, what are you talking about?
The five G. You know how when we had to approve that wireless antenna and we really just had to sit there and be like, yep, because FCC overregulates us, like, they're like, they trump us, so they're like, they get to do it, and we just had to look at the site plan? Do you remember that?
Yeah, kinda.
Salt Palace?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just opened that up here.
So what's the forty R, what's that about?
So, I don't know, but, did, did we print?
It's in.
Here it is, it's in here. So, if you read it, it's forty R is smart growth zoning in housing production, which, if you read it, it really isn't that smart. And the reason they sell it to you is they say that they're gonna give you a lot of money. But if you look at the back of the law, any of the money you get has to be repaid. So my fear on the forty R is, number one, we don't have to adopt the law in a town. And then we won't get money, is what everybody says, but if we have to pay it back. But here's the other problem. If you have twenty units per acre and you have a three or a four acre lot, we're adding sixty to eighty units, right? Sixty to eighty possible kids in schools, maybe more. We're looking at roads, we're looking at water drainage. And that's the whole reason that subdivision control went in in the nineties is to prevent us ha- from having overpopulation.
That's, 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 that T thing, right, with the, uh.
Oh, it's piled, it's just piled.
With the Ts, because I read that whole thing on the T. And, uh, you know, they, they want, they want a fifty acre area designated as multifamily within a half a mile of the T station. And, you know, minimum cut, minimum fifteen units an acre. I mean, that's great, where's all the land they wanna do that with? I don't know why everybody gets nervous about it, I mean, where are you gonna put all these fifteen units per acre multifamily near half a, half a mile from the T station? You already have Twin Lakes, but I guess that doesn't count. But that's a perfect area, if you did a fifty acre circle there. Include that, and then whatever, whatever else you could, uh, fit in.
But the impact, and when you have a septic system is not considered. You know, when, when, when they do all this, state does it, you know, it works fine when you have city service.
Well, and, you know, depending, if, if, if the units are big enough, you have enough, then you probably have to have your own treatment, treatment plan on the property.
But, so in, in Braintree, to your point on cities, how it works, Braintree is over, like, really wishing they didn't apply to all these things because their infrastructure is murdered from it. They actually overturned everybody in Braintree and got rid of that government, and they're going towards not developing anymore because of what happened to their infrastructure.
Even if you filled out the forms and went ahead with the T, they're not forcing you to do multifamily, it's not like you have to do it. You don't have to take grants or anything.
Yeah, you do.
They just want, they just, they just want the towns to show. I mean, you could, you could sit down and say, all right, this is what we got, this is what the town has, we can't meet what you're requiring.
We can, though, I mean, there, there's, there's different areas that would very, be very well suited, and the danger in signing something like this is you, you now have to comply by a certain date, because we just read it out loud.
It's already too late, you had to comply by, like, last week, you know?
Um.
Or at least fill out the forms for them.
Yeah, and it's a dangerous thing, because to get to get money and then have to repay it, to overbuild where you are, it's like, we'd now be living. We'd now be, um.
But then, you know, you don't have to take the grant money, you, you know, this for infrastructure.
Why would we sign it then?
You know? Well, it doesn't, doesn't, to, to me, it doesn't sound like it would hurt.
It would, because it says.
Open.
It says we'd have to comply by a certain.
Well, you have to show.
We would be able to comply, and we don't want it in our town. This, 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 most residents in this town don't want it to become a city. We already have overloaded schools, we have problems with our roads, we have problems with our water. We don't, we don't.
Well, I bet it would be, it would help the tax base, too, there would be more.
No, it won't.
Sure it would.
We'd have to build new schools, we already have problems with roads, there's gonna be more weight on our schools, there's gonna be more.
So where are we ever gonna get the money to fix the roads? Where's that ever gonna come from?
Overbuilding will never do it, it only is good for the developer.
The, the, the problem with just developing housing, that's not gonna offset anything.
Well, thing is, this town will never have the, the commercial industrial property to, 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 you know, to offset.
Right, but.
You know, the resi- this, this is a bedroom community, the residents are always gonna have to pay the tab, that's all there is to it, you know?
Exactly, but, but to go out there and say, oh, you know, I mean, drive down eighteen, I don't think that's what we're looking for.
I don't see, I couldn't see it happening there.
Have you ever been down Phillips Road in Hanson? A very nice residential road that all of a sudden has a forty R building.
Yeah.
And that's what you'd be looking at all around you.
Looks like driving into Brockton over there, you know, that's what the building looks like.
Yeah.
Into a city. So, Oak Street, there's a couple of, um, lots that would be perfect for it.
Yeah, but if you read it, it has to be, like, they're, they're pushing a half a mile from the T station, or an area that's accessible to the T, where it's actually, people can easily get there.
Right.
Well, anywhere in this town, they can easily get there.
Huh?
You could say, anywhere in this town, they could easily get to it.
But if you, you get a minimal amount of money, and then you have to pay it back, and then you have to upkeep all those people, I mean, it's not gonna work. Watch other towns overpopulate and the problems that are occurring from it. Especially where on, on economic downturn.
So this forty R is pretty much the same thing?
Yeah. It's just like, remember how we were going over complete streets and I was against it and read the implementation plan? So, do you remember this?
Oh, yeah, that was.
Do you remember the thirty-eight thousand dollar obligation we had to pay, and remember what I said? When you signed into that application, you allow the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to now change any of your laws just by applying. That's the danger of signing into forty R, just because. Because you allow these little things, if you read into this, then read it, please, it's a danger to our future. Because then they can change laws at any point in time, just because you're doing something, that's, that, that, we want, we wanna, we wanna keep America freedom. Constitution. We don't want the government to just come in and change things as they see fit, right? That's my view. For the, for the grandkids, I don't have any, I know you do, I know you do. But. We need to watch out for them.
Hmm.
I always use California as the example. Look at LA, is that really progress to not have enough electricity and water? It's not.
Yeah, it's a little different.
Oh, no, because that's how it all started.
Yeah, but this, this, you look at the land in this town, you don't have any places that's gonna happen, you know?
No, we actually have tons of places.
Figure out someday how to try to get and fix roads like Hayward Street, and, you know, put some money into the infrastructure of the town, and I don't know. You know? I don't see how it's gonna happen. You know, a couple of pot shops, that's not gonna do it, you know? Uh. Commercial, industrial.
Well, I mean, any business that we get is, is a help, that's, that's what I was saying, I'm not saying that we're gonna instantly become a town that's got a lot of major business, but.
No, because you can't, because you can't get anywhere from here, you know?
We need to be pro-business, and, and the business that's gonna come here is gonna draw from here. It's, it's not gonna draw from outside to come here for business. That's like when they were talking about the pot shop saying, oh, you know, people are gonna drive for miles to come, I don't think so, we're in the middle of nowhere. If we had a highway going by us, then I'd say, yeah, maybe you'd get people to pull in.
By your opinion, I think one is plenty, you know? But then, like Jason was saying, you know, you don't wanna shoot yourself in the foot and all of a sudden you can get some revenue from somebody else coming in, but I can't see that. You know, I can't see that happening, but, you know, it's, it's a tough call, like you're saying, it's a, it's a hard call.
But I, I think ultimately, you know, we, we turn it over and let the people decide, I mean.
On the marijuana, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I have my mixed feelings about one.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, but it's like, they're, they're gonna go somewhere. And the people in this town that wanna buy it, they've gotta go somewhere.
Well, the elevator roots are down in Kingston, right, look at the size of that town, they just got one there. You know?
One so far.
Seems like it's plenty, you know, yeah.
We'll see what happens, one might outweigh the other, but I know we do have another application, or talk of one, right? Down, um, on fifty-eight Self. Remember they came in?
Well, then we had the one up on fifty-eight at the liquor store, too.
Uh, I don't know what's going on with that one.
I think they pulled out, but they, they were looking up at the, you know, up at the liquor store. And tha- and that's what I said, I think people are gonna come in and, okay, you, you've got a store that's open now, or gonna be open, is it worth the money that it costs to open up the store, to try to compete against them?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's gotta be, somebody has to make that decision, it's not like, yeah, I'm gonna go buy sixteen cases of tonic and open a store. I mean, you, you definitely gotta put some money into that. But I thi- I think the other thing is, I, I think the competition's gonna be pretty tight on it. I don't think you're gonna see a huge variation in pricing that, you know, one store can make it and the other one can't.
Well, if you get too many stores, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be having as much sales, so it's not really a benefit to the town, really.
Right. No, I agree with that.
They'd be taken away from each other, just like having three, four dealerships in town or something, you know?
Right. But that's what I said, I think as far as, you know, people looking at opening a store are gonna have to look at that. You know? I mean, they're coming in saying, you know, oh, we're gonna do ten million dollars a year, I mean, I have no idea how much money they're gonna do, but if one's doing ten million, I don't see the second one doing ten million too. You know what I mean? Every store that comes in doesn't, doesn't do ten million, you're gonna look at what that area produces for sales. Will you pull in from somewhere else a little bit, maybe if somebody likes that store, they might come, but.
Right.
But I don't see you double, tripling sales because you have three stores, no.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking at saying, you got ten million, okay, if you come in, and you come in, and you got three stores, you're looking at three, three thirty-three apiece.
Right. Yeah, and it's still, the, the town's still getting the same in the end.
Yeah.
You know?
But what they're alluding to is, you know, we could, we could throw some extra money if we're making more.
So, so on this forty R, I wanna read this, section seven, "A proposed smart growth zoning district or start a home zoning district shall not be subject to limitation of the issuance of building permits for residential uses or a local moratorium on the issuance of such permits. In addition, a proposed start a home zoning district shall not be subject to any municipal environmental or health ordinances, bylaws or regulations that exceed applicable requirements of the state law or regulation unless the Department of Environmental Protection has determined that specific local conditions warrant imposition of more restrictive local standards." So you see what I mean, like, we're kind of giving up our, our whole way of making sure that they follow our Board of Health laws.
Yeah, well, you gotta fol- you gotta, yeah, Board of Health is important.
That's why I'm.
You gotta follow that.
Well, they said state law, so I mean, that's part of the state.
Yeah, state.
But still, it's, it's a dangerous liaison, because if the state changes now, what? Anyway, I, I don't like the disregarding of our laws. My personal opinion.
Well, I, I kind of agree with that. Look, can we talk about the Verizon for a minute?
Yeah.
Because the Verizon Wireless, we got a, a letter here, "As discussed, I'm looking to confirm whether or not a site plan review is required." And this, this is for Plymouth Street, isn't it, Joanne?
Nine twenty-six Plymouth Street.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Which is pretty much the same thing that we did for Monpont Street. For the cell tower.
So we need to have a site plan just for having them come in then, right? And show us what they're doing so that we have it on record.
Well, what she's saying here is that, uh, they applied for the building permit to modify their equipment at, uh, nine twenty-six Plymouth Street and received a rejection why the state in the planning, plan, planning review was required. I mean, we did it for Monpont Street. I would ask that she just submit the site plan, uh.
I think so too.
We know there isn't much we can do about it, but if we get the, i- i- we get it submitted to us, then we can approve it and we'll, we'll, we'll.
And have it in our file.
What's going on.
Joanne, can you post us for the town meeting on May ninth, twenty twenty-two? Do you wanna do it at six or six-thirty? It starts at six-thirty, but we already voted.
So, we don't have to post if we're just going to town meeting, we have to post if we're going to.
Vote.
Act.
Okay, so, we don't need to post to them?
Right, if we've already made our.
What if we were there and somebody asked us to make a decision, would it just be safe to do it?
Decision or not.
Mm-hmm. That's just a second thing, uh. I mean, it could be possible. What if like? Yeah, that's what you, that's what you, we usually do, I, I was just thinking it wouldn't be harmful to post a meeting, just because we were all gonna be there, just in case.
No, yeah, no, I, I agree.
We, we can post, that's no problem, but, I mean, just, to speak on anything on, that's, on the town warrant, we don't have to post.
Okay, okay.
I mean, if, that's w- why I was asking if we were gonna take the vote tonight or we'd make it a town meeting, if we were gonna make that vote at town meeting for the recommendation, we have to post for that. But we've done that, and I don't think there's any other
Okay.
Things that we're, we're gonna take a vote on, so.
Alright.
Uh, I leave it up to the board, if you wanna post. Hmm, that's fine.
Just do it anyway?
We can.
I was just making sure to do due diligence and ask.
Yeah, it can't hurt, right?
It can't hurt.
So, yeah, May ninth, six-thirty, town meeting. Potty. It's the only place open on Monday nights in Halifax, please join us.
That's Verizon.
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
If we've got everything else.
Well, the country club, um, comprehensive permit was, uh, continued till July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine forty.